Before we started this meeting, and we have several options. One is that if we find that we're using our time for a work session, as we probably will, there is also time on the regular meeting agenda at 6 o'clock where people can make comments as usual for items that are not necessarily on the council agenda. Then there's also going to be a bigger meeting on April 14th at the library, which is just going to be another public discussion. And we are scheduling one in between now and the 14th. So there's going to be several times when people can have their input on this. And so we might actually, as a council, need to use this time. But feel free to stay into the regular meeting if you have comments that you'd like to share. So given that, do you want to, the staff want to talk to us about the information that we get asked for research on first before we?
I'm going to do that.
Well, I can. You know, Bernie had asked some questions about how did the development kind of stack up to the Willets Hotel? And there were some questions at the last meeting about the height and relationship of RMI and the youth center building, the one that's on the corner, that's building A. And so I prepared some notes for, really for Bernie's purposes, but then he kind of asked me to print them out for him. I put some in the back. But I don't really need to go over it in excruciating detail, but the height of the Willets Hotel is 45 feet. The height of RMI building is 34 feet, eight inches. The youth center building, that corner one, the plans that we had on the department had that at 42 feet, six inches. And then there's an additional three-foot parapet that's allowed. And the height of the Lowe building hasn't really been determined yet. They're going to be doing some additional studies on that, on the height of a hotel. And they plan on coming back to meet on April 14th, that's what they plan to do with what is not important on the height. In terms of kind of massing, the Willets Hotel is about 72,000 square feet above ground. They have a little bit of square footage for it, and they have 113 rooms. The Lowe proposal has the hotel building about 64,540, 60 rooms. And then they have the 12 short-term rental units that are going to have 28 units. The Lowe building also is going to have some retail square footage. These are the numbers that Chris gave me, 640 square feet of detail, 100 square feet of built-in floor, and 800 square foot of rooftop lounge. The Willets Hotel has about 1,500 square feet of retail. I think that's kind of the bigger pieces of information that were on that sheet, just for kind of comparison of kind of where, you know, what's been approved in the past. But again, we don't quite know exactly what the height of the hotel will know more. Are there other questions that staff was going to bring back?
No.
Okay. So my understanding, although it doesn't say much on the agenda, is that this, we are going to, as council, just react to the Lowe's presentation?
Uh huh.
Correct? Because we, like Bernie said, we didn't really have an opportunity to do that. And so I'm actually happy to go first.
Well, I have one question that's kind of important. Do we know what the relationship about how and when the hotel gets built is to the condominium units?
Currently, the hotel is, I take the second base of the project, but we have talked to the development team about the importance of the hotel and the overall project. And are the ways to make it the first, if that's decided, this is the project that we need to watch.
So is that a contingency on the, right now, or what? Or is it undecided?
It's undecided.
So we're not necessarily looking at a hotel and the condos?
How many of you guys have clarifying questions?
Go ahead.
Go, go, girl. Okay. I actually took some time to write my comments down. I'm going to start. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. And many thanks to those of you who have put in a tremendous amount of time, commitment, and passion creating a vision for Basalt. Many of our community members have a vision for Basalt. It has been expressed through our community planning documents, surveys, opinions, and through elected officials. Ideas for our future may not look exactly alike, but we hear over and over is that we share a desire to protect our small-town character, our vistas, and our access to our natural surroundings. We may differ in our definition of those things, but we still share the end goal. We want the best for Basalt. We all have opinions, and all of them have standing and deserve respect. I too have an opinion. And here's what I believe. I believe that the river is key to vitality in Basalt. We all seem to agree on this. A river in downtown is the only thing we have that no one else in this valley has. It differentiates us from all the other communities. I believe it needs to be the centerpiece for our community's recreation, social activities, concerts, art, and just plain fun. Over the years, we have approved away our access to many of our riverfront areas, as you can see when you look around downtown. I believe what is left is to be preserved with wide-open spaces for all kinds of activities. Restaurants and recreation are ideally suited for this site. If you can visualize the restaurant that hangs over the river in Salida where guests watch the river activities while spending an afternoon. High-end housing was not and has not been at the top of our list of community needs. I don't believe the riverfront is the place for high-end or affordable housing. High-end housing will get built regardless. It's building the affordable housing that's the trick for us. I believe I'm charged with working for the greater good of our community. If we, as a council, hold to that charge, I believe that in time we can create something that others want to visit and be part of. For many years, our community has voiced a desire to be more like Carbondale. Whether you agree or not, there is a vitality in Carbondale and in other award-winning towns that is real, and it is not based on buildings, condos, or hotels. The community homes with outdoor concerts, events, arts, and people. Their events were created by that community, for the community, and they attract visitors from throughout the region. That's what I envision happening along the river if we're willing to seize that opportunity. I believe that the river should be a regional gathering place focused on recreation, art, and community events. I also believe that development there should be focused on nonprofits, dining areas, and recreation, to name a few. I can't say I have every idea. I understand that there is disagreement on this, and that's okay. But understand that my motivation is very simple, clear, and consistent. I want to leave Basalt a better community, just like we all do. Council?
The, obviously, in some of the letters we've been seeing in the papers or that we've been receiving, there's been a lot of concern about the details. And of course, the details of how the water's going to be handled and all that isn't what we're really looking at at this time. I think that the focus that I look at this project through is all of our desire to revitalize downtown and to finally bring our economy back out of this terrible recession that's been killing a lot of us, and including myself. The, you know, we had the detailed and very good report from the consultants who were brought in by BIC. And one of the points of that, that I thought was very important, was the fact that the loss of high-paying jobs in this area, and those jobs that have actually held even are the low-paying jobs. And the problem with affordable housing is it's reportable to anybody unless we do something about the jobs. You know, unless we attract things that can create the jobs for the people to be able to afford any affordable housing we build. And we've seen from dealing with Real America that they're having trouble building a building that meets our guidelines now. So if we lower our affordable guideline rents, then we're out of the affordable housing there. On the optimistic side, if the three projects we have on the drawing board, if we work really hard and fight to get them actually built, we'll have a good step forward towards our goal of affordable housing. But any town planner or worker saw it, will tell you that you need a variety of things in the downtown area. You can't expect revitalization if all you're doing is affordable housing. Is there room for some high-end housing? If you don't have balance, any town developer or planner will tell you, you're never going to get, you know, what you want as far as the revitalization. I think there's also been some question about are these openings and are these viewpoints into the river really adequate? And I think that there's a very good point brought up by whoever it was in the audience last time, that as we get into the planning process of will level, that staking the property is going to give us all either a great deal of comfort or discomfort in this area. You know, when they say there's a half a football field, a space there, I was just looking at my photos from a UCLA Stanford football game when I was basically on the field, half a football field is built. If you're standing down, if you're not looking at a map, and so, as I say, it may be, you know, that when you're standing in that space, you either get a good feeling about these goals that we all share with the mayor, or we don't. And then the other thing, I think, is if we state that property and so that we can see, well, if this is built in some of this plan after it goes through the process, we're going to have this much area, riverfront park property, all the way from the bridge to, and it's state that we can go down there and stand there. Again, you know, we'll be able to say, wow, we can do all the things that you talked about and I talked about last time, you know, where it's a center of the valley for people to come and recreate, and there's room there to do it on a parkway. So I think that if we keep the revitalization in mind, that this is our long-term goal here, I think we can meet those very worthy goals that the mayor just brought up. But so far, I'm pretty intrigued by this plan that Lowe came forward to. And yeah, it may need some tweaking, and they're going to have some engineering problems. But, you know, I'm interested in seeing if it gets in the process.
I look at the proposal they gave us, and it does mirror what the DAC came up with, or not mirror, but it's pretty close in line with what DAC came up with. That's a plus. I also see it as, you know, the first offer we've had on this land. If you marry the first guy that asks, you know, or you can get a better deal, a better offer down the road, it's the mayor.
Don't tell me you don't.
And I think that's something.
Plus, it's true love.
Something we need to look at. I'd be more comfortable with this type of bellman if we had a Harvard Business School case study, or if Uli came and told us, had success stories of how it built downtown to revitalize, or how this stuff doesn't work, or what was it, you know? I'm not really basing our opinion personally on anything, I think any of us are, other than our gut feelings. And I think if we had some actual research behind it, that would help make an easier One of my biggest concerns with the 40 condos is that they're going to be vacant eight or 10 months a year, and that doesn't solve our vitality problem. We do fine downtown in July and August. That's not the issue. It's the other 10 months that we need people here. And Mike, I'm going to have to use your genius to come up with a way, you know, that we can make those permanent residents. No developer's going to take de-distribution. No developer's going to take lower-priced apartments. Yet we need to do something to encourage that those amazing properties on the river in downtown Basalt are occupied and not just visited.
Would you say anything about affordable housing on it?
I wrote it down, but I didn't because I'm sure it's going to be discussed.
All right. I thought that was our main discussion, was park versus affordable housing that Jackie threw out.
That's just.
Or whatever, anybody.
Were you up to your task?
Yeah.
I'm going to wait to comment. I wasn't here for the presentation, so I got to get up.
Rick, Brian?
I went first. It's your turn, Rick, last time.
Wait the time.
For me, I guess it's, you have to have comments.
May I ask if there's enough in the proposal that you saw from Lowe that you would encourage them to go forward in the process? Or is so far off that you talked?
Yeah. I think, I don't want to say that it's disappointing, but after watching 350 or smaller people go through a process that took 18 months or 20 months, and there's neighborhood meetings, and there's all this stuff going on, plenty of opportunities to weigh in with the DAC, meetings in the library that were facilitated, why now? Why are people coming out now saying, voicing their concerns? Is it just a typical thing that happens when you have a project come before you that takes the average guy a year to figure out that something's going on? If that's the case, there needs to be another opportunity for people that feel like now's the appropriate time to weigh in instead of before. In other words, now they've got a chance to look at this and go, oh, this is what they're coming up with? Well, I don't agree. So maybe there needs to be an opportunity for these people, these people, the citizens to come in if they don't agree and say so in a forum that's facilitated, you know, open, above the other exception. And get their issues on the table. I mean, I hate to see a guy spend another two years and millions of dollars going through a process here when we've sat down and said that that's no longer the way we're going to do business. We're going to step out to the community, involve the citizens, get a plan, get a vision, make sure it's supported by the majority of the people, and then we're going to invite a developer to come in and meet that criteria. And now we're backpedaling. So if we're going to do that, let's stop backpedaling, try one more time to get some feedback, and see if we can act on it. Otherwise, if I was Lowe, I might go, you know, when you get to your point where you really know what you want, then we'll be back in the room. That's about it.
It might have been before you came in, but we talked about the fact that we're going to have a meeting we're shooting for the 1st of April and another one on the 14th to do exactly what you suggested.
Well, exactly what I suggested was to give the people that don't feel congruent with this plan to come in and say so. We don't need to hear testimony from, you know, the 80% of the people that are involved already that like it, my opinion. So, and yeah, you're right, there should be some tweaking. I think there's opportunities for affordable housing. I keep going back to that article about downtowns and who is revitalizing what and how they're doing it, and young people that are getting engaged. I don't think we're Carbondale. I don't think we're Aspen. I think we're Basalt. I think we need to have our own identity. You know, so I don't want to get hung up on affordable housing or if there's, you know, 50-foot open space or 250-foot open space. You know, I just want to keep the momentum we have, and if there's people out there that disagree, then they need to raise their hand and say so. So far, there's only been a few in here. If there's that many more, then mine will have coffee and croissants or something.
And you're.
I don't want to faff around anymore.
Okay.
This is what we do. This is what we've done, and it's just not meaningful time to spend. You know, let's get it out there and get it out there.
So we should just build it like he's presented it?
I don't think so. I think that there's been enough feedback now, and this is not typical, or it is not untypical, as you know, for us to get 75, 85, 90% down the highway and then have the questions raised that have been raised. And the thing is that they're the same old questions. Affordable housing, kind of open space, small-town character, you know, it's the same, same thing. So, you know, let's figure it out.
I think that's why we're here.
Yeah. And when the application comes in.
That's why we're restricting it to back and forth among the council.
Before we go to a public hearing process where people are limited by time and dates and agendas and all the other politics that go along the running of council meeting, then I think there should be a couple more forums. I mean, why, I don't want to really, you know, we already have a lot of personal time into this, and I think that if there's stuff out there that needs to be raised, it's better to do it in a whole new manner.
In a way, I'm actually finding myself agreeing with you. Basically, what you've said is our job here is to get the big issues on the table, and we need to have somebody making notes and get our, this is only an initial reaction. What I'm going to say tonight, my initial gut feeling, we have not been through the process. I asked for this additional information. We need a lot more facts and figures and mockups and scale drawings. All we've seen is some pretty pictures on a wall of pretty-looking buildings with no relationship to anything. Do I want that building? That's gorgeous. No. I want facts. I want detail. I want how it fits in our policy. And this has already given me a lot of facts. This whole process, we are going to be drawing out the developer and interacting with the developer. So I agree with that, that let's get the key issues on the table tonight, get them up on the wall, get a facilitated discussion, and have people, instead of attacking each other's points of view and deeply-held emotional beliefs, having them address the issues that the town has to address realistically and concretely and respectfully. But I think we have to get into the things that the developer wanted to know from us, honestly. What is our reaction to the size, scale, and mass and purpose of this development on the land that, let's face it, this town has created without any significant help from our so-called partner, Community Development Corporation. We had to relocate all the trailer park residents. We had to get them settled. We had to get that land repaired to where it was usable, and we already have spent 2.4 million that they owe us. And that's going to be a very big discussion, in my mind, is how do we get paid back for that development? In my mind, we're more like partners than he's the landowner. What we say and our opinions should carry a lot of weight because we had got a whole lot of skin already in that. And I'll give you my, you know, I don't want to beat around the bush. I'll tell you my frank reaction. Probably most people won't like it as being too much or too little, but, and I'm going to say, this is subject to change as we go down the road. This is just my initial gut reaction based on my election, on the DAC report, and what are the values that I see and have known about in this town. For me, the architectural look, feel, and tone of the town and the usability of public city park, in an active city park, are all of about equal importance. I want economic vitality as very much, but I am not giving up these other important values of affordable housing, public active space, viewpoint, and beauty of our entrance just for economic vitality. And the town has already showed its willingness to move forward boldly and break old traditions by approving the four-story Willets Hotel, the Element, which is a cookie-cutter family motel. And we gave them a lot of variances. They've got four floors right in a row, no setback on the fourth floor. The windows are right in a row. They have room air conditioners. We let them build into our easements to get their full land. We gave them 88 parking spaces worth between a quarter million and 800,000. We reduced the parking because they wanted it. We didn't think that was a good idea. And we, we all had concerns and objections about the look, the feel, but let's face it, it's out on 82. It doesn't conform with the charming architecture of Willets, but it's on the back of it. The backside of Whole Foods is not all that charming. It is utilitarian. It'll bring a huge amount of needed visitors to our downtown. They'll get tired at Willets. That is a huge step forward in our economic revitalization that I think this council could be proud of facilitating by breaking some rules and investing some money. So, you know, we had this six-month-year community building in which everybody, whether they were resident, non-resident, adult, child, whoever, could throw in their hat and their map. And that was a great educational and community process building, but it was not a very useful planning tool. And so Mike suggested, and the council embraced, forming a blue ribbon committee of business people and longtime residents who know the town to come up with an actual set of guidelines. Not an exact blueprint, but an overriding set of guidelines that even though, that we were to take very seriously in implementing any development on this property. And some people, I remember Ted Guy came in here. He says, "I'm going to make sure you guys implement every single thing in that, the way it's written, that you don't go off and do your own idea." Well, let's, then let's look at the DAC and what it says, because it's a written report that the group, through meeting after meeting, a group session, it does not represent one individual's opinion. It represents the findings of the groups in black and white. We all have a map. We all have the report. The first thing I notice about the map is there is only one building that's multi-story. Every single other building on the map is two stories high. So I don't see how you can say that this proposal with four-story-high buildings conforms with what's clearly two-story. There are many more of them. The grouping is different. There is one single building that says multi-story, mixed-use. Do I think we should do a blueprint and apply this literally? No. But I think that gives us a very good idea that the DAC as a group wanted small-scale buildings that would fit in with that plot of land and not create a blockage between us and the view of the river. The other things I will just take from the DAC, I mean, there are many things that you can pull, but I don't think these were really looked at. And they said, a question came up, where should a four-story building be in the downtown? And that area was identified as the old Clark's Market. And they said, for the downtown, four stories, and that should be the top of it, should come in Clark's Market. They did not identify the pan and fork as an appropriate area for a four-story building. The, let's see. And then we had the public survey, which some people are second-guessing, but like 500 people participated. We had an expert company do it. Do we have to follow that blindly? What did it really tell us that we don't know? People put a high value on parks and open space. They want economic revitalization. I mean, I don't think it really told us a lot of new stuff. Maybe quantified it a little bit, but it reinforced what we already know. So when I look at that and the, let's see. All right. And I suggest everybody get out your CD And I suggest everybody get out your CDC report and look through it because I hold it in very high regard. And I want to follow it as close as I can in general. So my question is, and I don't know the answer to this yet, is are we going to give up some key values just for economic vitality? Are we asking too much or putting too much on this one piece of land that is going to identify, is going to really define town's identity, look, and feel coming into town? How much can that support our desire for economic vitality? The DAC recommended that that kind of intense development and residential growth occur in the core of the town. That's what the report says. So should it bear some? Yeah, absolutely. So how much is appropriate and what size? I would say I agree with Herschel. We need to go through the process. We need to have lines on the ground. We need to have poles in the air. And I would request that we help fund an actual scale model of whatever it is the P and Z comes up with of that whole riverfront so that people can actually see it on the table and get a feel for whether they think it's an appropriate height, density, and space. So, and I would say there's no one right place answer. There are conflicting values or overlapping values that we share. And some people want economic vitality to trump all of our other long-held values, which those values are reported in the DAC report and in the survey. I'm not willing to go quite that far. I think this proposal exceeds what we can reasonably put. We may have to wait till we can redevelop Clark's to get the density, size, and height that we want for our economic development because we want to save public open space. We want to save vitality. We want, I want, and I think Herschel says, a very open city-active park, probably the best park in the whole Roaring Fork Valley. That takes a lot of money. We have money. We have 800,000 in our budget for economic development and council items. We can use a lot of that to reduce the developers' cost and enhance what we want on that property by using that money. We can even use it to offset some of the cost of affordable housing. I think using that money, and we have 450,000 left over in the bond, the $5-million bond, we could use that money to support structured parking and get some public parking out of it and reduce the developers' cost. I am for engaging the developer because they've got a good track record. They're solid. They're the kind of people we want to deal with. I think we should engage them actively, offer them incentives, but also be willing to expect a significant moderation on the size, height, and density on that riverfront. And I think we should be very flexible about affordable housing and realistic, including considering $200 a square foot cash and loo instead of a $600 a square foot condo price. And there's other things that we can be flexible to make that become a real non-issue, that and the parking, to attract this developer to this project.
One more? And Mark, if you didn't hear, there's going to be lots more. We don't have enough to listen to.
We've got about 20 minutes left. We'll have to play your council. Okay.
Well, I think we should, do you want any time for que... If somebody has a question of anybody in the audience?
Well, I think that's a fine idea. I just, I know that once it starts, we can't really shut it down.
Well, I think you're right. We've had our discussion.
I was going to say, you can talk, but you can't talk.
Yeah. When, we're going to have two more sessions.
Right.
But they will be, as Rick suggested, not just open, but directive with specific questions and conversations that people have to be ready to answer. And we will take, there's no wrong answer.
Okay, we're going to do the work session and come back here at 8:30 for a regular meeting.
Thanks.